Good morning and welcome to the Thursday, May 8, 2025, meeting of the Committee at the Hall at the Sunshine Coast Regional District, which is in the territories of the Seashell and Squamish Nations. We have an agenda before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing no amendments, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Moved. Seconded. All in favor? Great. We're off. Next, I'd appreciate a motion to receive all reports and communications. Moved. Seconded. All in favor? We're good to go. And the very first thing up is the very first of our water supply updates for 2025. Over to GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Committee. Yes, this is the first water supply update of the season. And I know that a lot of people are wondering what the status of the snowpack is. So I'm sharing my presentation and will provide that information. By the way, for as a change in scenery, this is Edwards Lake instead of the usual Chapman Lake that I present. This is the snowpack in Chapman Lake. It's relatively normal compared to the average we had over the last 20, 30 years. So the blue lines are the snow water equivalent and the white, the more transparent columns are the snowpack, the snow depth. The snow water equivalent, that's actually the, one of the more important indicators for us. Because that's actually the amount of water that's actually in a cubic meter or cubic feet of snow. And that's pretty normal. So Chapman Lake is, especially if you compare it to last year, significantly better. This is how the lake looked like last week when staff were doing their snow survey. And on the left side, you see staff boring a cone into the snow to measure the depth and the snow water equivalent. And the outlet is open. There's no ice on the outlet of the lake. Oh, yeah, my mouse works. As a reference point, this is dam, thereabouts. This situation at Edwards, Edwards is slightly lower elevation than Chapman. And the snowpack is there also a little bit, a little bit lower than average. But still, I would say relatively well, especially if compared with some of the previous years. So overall, I think the snowpack is not extremely good, but also definitely not alarming at this point in time. That's different elsewhere in the province. This is a map from snow survey as of April 1st from the province. And all the green areas are, green and blue areas would be above average. And what you can see is that there are definitely a lot of areas, especially north of us, that have low snowpack. Siocoteen, Central Coast, and the Peace Region. And also the Skeen and Nas watersheds are really low in snowpack. And the southern parts and the coastal parts where, South Coast where we are, on average, they're just below, below average. So not too alarming. And that's luckily the same for Vancouver Island. What about the temperature forecast for the upcoming three months? This is the map for, this is probably the likelihood of a warm, warmer than normal temperatures over the, for entire Canada. The arrow just as a clarification, that's more or less where we are. As you can see, it's high degrees of above-normal temperatures all over Canada, including in our area. Last year, at this time of the year, we had about the same picture for our area. And ultimately, the temperatures were lower because of the impact of sea, seawater that was cooler at that time. So it's still to be seen how it will actually look like. Especially given that April was already lower than normal. There's this year, there's no clear El Niño or La Niña phenomenon happening. So there's no, that's not driving anything in terms of precipitation or temperature or... So it's really uncertain how the next couple of months look like. We might be warmer than normal, but also still have a lot of rain. We don't know. We have to see. And this is just a graphic depiction. This is also on our website. Of the stages over the last 12 years, I think we're now at. And as you can see, there is clearly, there's no delineation, there's no connection between early start of, let's say, us needing to call stage two versus meeting, actually getting to stage four. I always say 2022 is the perfect example of late calling of stage two and still one of the worst drought periods we ever had. So the current snowpack and the current weather doesn't say anything about how late summer, early fall situation on the coast will be. How are we doing in terms of water supply itself? The water conservation regulations are as per our bylaw in place for all the water systems as of May 1st. The Chapman water system, as indicated, timing of stage two is so dependent on the temperature and the precipitation in May and June. There's no forecast to be made there yet. I presented earlier to the board, but Jesa Well, we have to take it online. I had to take it out of commission last year in August because it wasn't working anymore. And repairs, as part of the budget process, the board approved budget to repair it. And we're currently trying our best to get it online as soon as possible. And we are currently in the process of procuring a contractor that can do the work for us to repair it. And we hope to have it online, back online by the end of July. However, in the meantime, Church Road is ready to go and can replace the production capacity that otherwise Jesa Well would be able to produce. So I, from an overall water supply perspective, I don't see a big risk here yet. Chapman Flow, we've been working, as per the board direction, with Seashell Nation and the province on reduction. Trying to get to a place where we can reduce, see what the implications are on fish population of reducing the EFNs in June and July and August and September. We've made really good progress with our consultants and with the nation and with the province. The latest is only that DFO now indicated that they want to be part of the table, part of the conversation as well. And they haven't had an interest in the situation prior. So that means that any authorization that, or their review will take us at least until the end of July before we get a response from them. So at that point, reducing the EFN for the rest of the summer is most likely not really an option anymore. So how it most likely will evolve is that we will do all the planning and I'll get all the permits and do all the assessments this year. And next year, in June 1st, we would then be fully ready to lower the EFNs in 2026 and 2027. Chapman Systems, there's a more detailed report on the today's committee's agenda on the system, on the status of those authorizations. So we're ongoing conversation with Seashell Nation and the province for the use of the Seifan systems this year. And based on conversations we had at staff level earlier this week, hopeful that at least we will get all the authorization in place, even if we would need them for an extended late summer drought this year. What about communications? Just like last year, we initiated our get ready for the summer campaign. All the users in the of the Chapman system received the pamphlet that's presented at the right. And the primary message is this year, as a community, you by now know what to do and what is expected from you. There are some tips and tricks on how to, where to look at in order to reduce the supply. We currently have about 1,150 water use update subscribers. And there are about 350 people in the Seashell area that also indicated that they would like to get their update in their mailbox every month. And they will get that once we start metering, once we start actually reading those meters. In terms of rainwater harvesting rebates, they're still available in all the water systems. So North-South Bender as well as regional, there are still funds available for residents that want to install a rainwater harvesting system. Filling it this year will be really dependent on the amount of rain we still get. But there are still definitely still funds available for people that want to be ready for next year's summer. In terms of resolving leaks, we continued over the winter. With that, it's about half to three-quarter of one person's job is to resolve leaks at the moment. Since January 1st, we've solved in the rest of the primary electric areas, a lot of leaks. But 20, we had to go to a shut-off notice. And they're all resolved, which is almost just over half a million liters a day, which is a huge amount. And in the Seashell area, we're currently focused on the really big leaks that are being identified the moment the meter is installed. And recently, since January 1st, also, we had two significant leaks resolved, about 123,000 liters a day. So very substantial leaks. So it's really effective that we continue to do that work. And as always, more information is available on the SRD site under Water Updates. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. That was a very thorough update. And it's great to be refreshed on this situation coming into a whole new year. Director Inkster.
Thank you, Chair. The information, thanks for the presentation of the information. It's interesting when you look at the last number of years and the pack, snowpack and the other bar that you had. I can't remember what it was that you presented there by title and information. But the, the amount of snowpack in the other bar up doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have a water problem based on '22, where they were both much higher than they are this year, but yet we had a late summer drought. So obviously, the weather's nice now. And I, like many, I think, are happy when we're getting rain a lot of time at night. It seems very tropical. So it's like night rain. So it's, I think it's helpful and it's always what goes up over the dam. But it's a consideration. My, my concern well now is, other than the amount of water we can, we can use for our population, is the dryness of the land. And that's, that's my big concern. And it's all rain. It's all, that's all rain-dependent mostly because the water we pull out of the ground goes in pipes. So, so it's just interesting to look at the water science and what comes out of the sky. And, you know, it doesn't necessarily mean how much we have stored or how much comes over the dam if we don't get rain coming out of the sky and the fact that the heat of the land is evaporating a lot of our water right now with the warming climate that we're dealing with. So more of a comment, but it's, it seems to be all about the rain we get in the next few months periodically.
Thank you. I'm just going to follow up on that because you mentioned the humidity of the soil. And we've had some occasions lately where the soil has gotten so dry that it's... I'm not thinking of the word. It, it actually sheds the water. It just rolls right off it. Hydrophilic? Hydrophobic? Hydrophobic. Thank you. Do we measure soil moisture at all?
Thank you for the question. No, we don't at the moment. I know that it is definitely of concern, especially late summer, when we, the ground is completely dry, not only here, but also up the mountain slopes. The moment we then have, let's say, 10-mill rainfall, usually that 10-mill rainfall goes straight into the creeks. It just surface runoff, doesn't even get into the ground. Yes, it happens at lower elevation already. But that's, that's less of a concern from a water supply perspective because the ground higher up the mountain is still pretty wet, especially in the forested areas. So it will become a concern there later in the summer if we have a warm and dry summer.
Thank you. I assume, Director Inkster, your hand is residual. I'm going to Director Backs.
In response to your question, I do know that in determining the fire safety, the fire hazard rating, that both the Denaimo Fire Protection Office and the local fire departments do test the moisture level in the, in the duff, in the, in the ground in our area. It's, I don't believe they share that with the rest of our departments. But it's, they use that to determine the fire hazard level when they increase the fire hazard level as the soil gets more dry.
Thank you, Staff. That was brilliant. All right. I think I'm seeing no more hands, so I think we should move straight on to the next report, also about water. Gray Creek Monitoring Final Report and Project Follow-Up. So, over to Staff.
Thank you, Chair. Just a brief introduction to the, to the report that's before you. This report is the conclusion of a two-year study on Gray Creek's hydrometric data, which is the flow in the creek, and the hydrology, which is the source flow into the creek. It was commissioned before VCH changed treatment guidelines for surface water and also before Langdale was identified as a potential source and well before recent well discoveries and data. Both of those factors, along with NHC's data, have been taken into account in Staff's recommendations in this report. And we just wanted to give current council a briefing on the history of the start of this particular project. Thanks. We are, Staff are recommending that the SRD take no further action in development of Gray Creek intake, which was previously a budget request from Staff in the 2025 budget. That the Gray Creek intake and treatment design and engineering Phase 1 project be abandoned and the associated growing community funds be returned to the unallocated fund pool. That the 2025 to 2029 financial plan be amended accordingly. And further, that Staff continue the use of the And further, that Staff continue the use of the existing Gray Creek water source as a supplementary source in dry summers until such time as the water supply situation on the Chapman water system is such that it's no longer required.
Thank you. That's quite straightforward. It's, I mean, it's, from one point of view, it's unfortunate that this didn't work out. But from the other point of view, we've been trying everything. And eliminating a few things so that we can concentrate on the best options seems very promising. Director Backs.
And towards that end, I would like to move the motions as they appear on page three.
Seconder, and that's seconded. All right, it's on the floor, Director Inkster.
Thank you. It's, I'm, I'm good with the motions, Chair, but I just wanted to ask a question of Staff. Obviously, Gray Creek is, was considered as an additional source. And much like the other water sources that includes Chapman, there's a, around these Chapman and around Gray Creek up top, there are other lakes and other water systems, and we could call them maybe, I don't know if they're part of the same watershed. Have we considered when we go forward, because we're always looking for a lot of water supply going forward, that the systems up above Gray would have any contributory contribution or contributory effect to the Gray system going forward as we look up there to see that that would be an additional water source to be drawn into Gray and have a larger water source? I use the watershed connected to Gray large enough to have a larger water source if we connect them up over the next number of years. Obviously, we've looked up there, we've been up there. And, and I've been hearing and I've heard over the last number of years that each of those systems have water sources around them that can in some way be connected. It's just all about cost and ease. So I'm wondering if you've given that any thought now that I have you here. Thanks.
Thank you. All the water, there are two major watersheds in the Alpine here. One is the Gray and one is the Chapman watersheds. And all, any of the lakes within the Gray watershed, ultimately, even they're connected or not physically or visually, they will be connected just in terms of how the groundwater is flowing back and forth. So even though there's no visual connection, they will be connected in terms of water, water supply from water supply perspective. We already, in the 90s, I would say cheated a little bit with installing the dam at Edwards, because Edwards Lake actually used to be the headquarters of Gray Creek. But we put a dam in the back, completely opposite of the natural outflow and created a lower outlet. So now the water is, we can take water into Chapman. So we're already, by doing so, we already more or less pay Peter to Repol because we're, we're now not getting the water in Gray because we're getting it in Chapman. I don't see any options for further connections of lakes or watersheds up there that would benefit us from a water supply perspective. Yes, there are lakes that are visually not connected, but ultimately they all are part of the same watershed. And I think the Gray Creek, these results clearly indicate that the flows in Gray Creek are just low and they will continue to be lower. And we know that there is downstream of our intake, there is fish, natural fish. There is a hatchery. We have senior water rights over the hatchery, but it's definitely something that is of, that is of, is an interest that is considered. And we have not connected with the nation in that yet in terms of any interest they might have around that watershed, but I wouldn't be surprised if they had. So from that perspective, I don't see any options to further increase. I don't see a further potential to increase the, the supply from the Tetraheaton Park area, from the Alpine systems that we have there.
Thank you, Staff. I'll add that there was a, last term, Staff looked at all the small lakes up in the subalpine areas and they were pretty much all eliminated as being relatively small lakes and not having a large water catchment area, rain catchment. Whereas Chapman Lake has a remarkably efficient rain capture area. And I think a couple of years ago, we had a day and a half of heavy rain and it refilled the entire lake in, in about a day and a half, which is extraordinary. So we've already got the best. So, thank you, Staff. We have a motion on the floor, recommendations from page three. Seeing no further hands, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. Bad news, but good news.
How do I get that report that you referenced there?
The, the report, I'm sure Staff can dig it out from, from last term on the other. I remember the lakes were called like C1, C2, C3, and one of them was sitting right on a fault line. So, yeah. Staff will dig that up for you.
Hopefully, it's not too much of a dig. And hopefully, it's near the surface. Thanks.
I think it's, it's, it's available on the website. I will find the link.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next up, emergency siphon systems authorizations and back over to GM Rosenbaum.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Staff wanted to provide the board with an update on the status of our current permitting around our emergency siphon systems at Edwards Lake and Chapman Lake. The report also provides a little bit of history of how we get where we are and why we only have those two-year cycles of permitting. So Chapman was first permitted in 2015, constructed in 2017 ultimately. And Edwards was constructed and permitted during the extended drought of 2022. In both cases, both lakes are located within the Tetraheaton Park, which is Class A park under the Beach Parks Act. And according to the regulations associated with the park, there are no permanent infrastructure, new infrastructure allowed within the park for any reason, for any purpose. So also not for water supply purposes. So the only reason for these systems to be permitted is the fact that they are an emergency system for the SRD to use when there is no other alternatives available. The two-year cycle is actually linked to the use approvals that we get under Water Sustainability Act, which has a maximum of two years. So that's why they issue not a permanent license, but a two-year approval. And BC Parks does a two-year approval as well. So we currently have the table on page eight of the agenda package, which two of the report provides an overview of the current status of the authorizations. And the report provides some options for next steps in terms of advancing permitting situation around these two systems. As I just indicated at the first editing on the agenda, first, my first report, is we have had some staff-to-staff conversations earlier this week with Shishan Nation. And we're hopeful that at least for this year, we'll get all the permits in place required to use both systems if we are in need to use them during a stage four situation. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the report. Thank you.
Thank you. I had a couple of questions. I see no hands up except for one that I think is residual. The, the, the nation requested a hydrological gauge below the confluence of the Edwards and Chapman outlet channels. I, I just would be interested in hearing a little bit more about that. That's, I mean, I looked it up on the map. That's a pretty remote area. So how, how do we install the gauge? How do we monitor it? When do we think we might have one there?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. You just identified some of the challenges associated with installing a gauge anywhere between here and between, let's say, our intake and both dams. It's very steep terrain, rugged terrain. There's no forest service roads. So it's very hard even to identify a spot where, that we could consider. So one of the conversations we had on Monday at staff level was to identify with the nation was to identify potential locations where that we could explore and that are accessible currently, are accessible or could be made accessible by the helicopter. So it would be a gauging station that we hope that we can put it online so that we can actually use, use the data live once online. But it all depends on if we can get some kind of electric power up there and how it is with transmission signals. Otherwise, it would need to be a data logger kind of gauging station. That's all to be determined. So the nation is aware that even though this is a condition for them to, for, as part of our permits for the use this year, they are aware of the fact that it's highly likely that we won't be able to get it operational prior to this summer. We're doing our best, we're working, but we will need to find a place or assess the location that is actually feasible and then do the design and potentially even additional permitting from a province, from the province. Maybe cut down some trees, clear some land, install the gauge, get a contractor there and then get it commissioned. So we hope to complete most of that work this year and then have it fully operational afterwards.
Thank you. I find this fascinating. I have one further question, which is what can the board do to advocate for the permits that we need in, to, to get them in a timely way?
Thank you for the question. I think there, if you ask for the permits for 2026, 2027, based on the direction of the board, Staff, if directed by the board today or at the board meeting, Staff will, will seek the approvals for 2026, 2027 in terms of submitted new applications and the rights and title application to the nation and to the province for Beach Parks and Water Sustainability Act. I think the bigger question is if there is a desire to have them long-term there, there, it will become not only a technical question, but also a political question. Ultimately, I think all of these potential processes to have them in place long-term ends up with the Ministry of Environment and Parks and actually with the minister. And so I think if the board would like to advance that route, I think there's a, there's a, there might be a role there for the board to play.
Thank you. We, the last thing we want is to be chasing after permits at the last minute again. So Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. Question for Staff. The, on page eight, so the detailed environmental impact assessment that has been requested by the Shishan Nation. Does this only look at the, the negative impacts of the siphons or does it also consider how, because I've, I've heard many times that without the siphons, there's a risk that the, the creek might run dry. So does it also look at those, like at the, the cons and the pros? Or are we only looking at how it negatively impacts the creek?
Thank you. Thank you for the question. The assessment itself is associated with Chapman Lake itself. However, in the analysis, in our conversations with the nation, we are taking it broader. We are, and that's, I think, part of the rationale behind the gauging, the request for the gauging station as well. It's like, because there are fish, fish between the lakes and our intake. So it's trying to get that entire system assessed so we can actually, there's an option to, to weigh interest and to, to see how potentially protecting one interest might have an impact to the other.
Thank you very much. Director Li.
Thank you, Chair. I was thinking about the hydrological gauging station below the confluence of the two output channels. Couldn't that be anywhere down the creek? Why would we be concerned that it's just where they happen to join? Below is anywhere from where they join to the water. So I'm, when I read it, that's what I read into it. But it sounds like I might have it wrong. So I'm just looking for a little clarity.
Thank you, Chair. Once water is leaving one of the two lakes or both, the amount of water that can, that will actually manage to gather intake can be more or less than what we've released at the lakes because of watershed contribution or watershed loss. Especially during the season, there's usually a watershed loss. Let's say we can release 250 liters a second at the lakes and we only get 150 here and the rest is just, or evaporated or absorbed by the creek and the surrounding areas. So the higher up we actually have a gauging station, the better you, the less impacted it is by watershed loss or watershed contribution. So the, it's, it's a, it's a most accurate information on what actually the likelihood is that there's good habitat there and good flows for the fish population present higher up in our watershed. And for example, there are steelhead in that water, in that area.
Thank you. And, and that is quite a distance, like between Chapman Lake and our intake is what, 15 kilometers? 18 kilometers? So we know what's happening at one end and at the other end, but 18 kilometers is a long way and there could be a lot going on there that we're not aware of. Director Gabius.
Thank you, Chair. I will move the recommendations on page seven with a comment. I don't know if there's a seconder? Or should I just make my comment now? Okay, it's seconded. Yeah, the, the, so understanding that we're, you know, we're reacting here and we need the siphons in order to make sure that we have enough water for emergency situations. That's totally, totally okay with that. The long-term use of the siphons, I know there's been some concerns about the long-term use of the siphons, and I do think that it deserves a broader conversation about the, the future of the watershed, the health of the watershed, what's the plan for the watershed. So hopefully, as a board, and we can have those conversations. I know Staff is, recommendation number two is coming back with a report to see what would be needed to get the long-term authorizations, but I feel like there's conversations, like broader strategic conversations that we could be having, sitting down with the Shishan nation and talking about what, what is the plan for, to ensure that the Chapman watershed is, continues to be, well, continues, is, is healthy in the future. Yeah, so just that's the comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. There is a motion on the floor. I see no aha. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. And my apologies, I meant to ask it before the motions got put on the table. With recommendation two, I'm wondering if staff have an idea on when they might report back to us? If we're looking at a two-year usage anyways, like it's not like we need this report next month. I'm just wondering if they had something in mind. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Our first priority is to obtain or try to obtain the permits, the authorizations required for this year. Second part is the ones for 2026, 2027. And I hope that we can get back to the board sometime in 2026 in terms of what the process could look like to secure long-term approvals so that we actually have time to take action, that the DSD actually allows time to take action prior to the end of 2027.
Thank you, Chair. And I think that speaks a bit to Director Gabius's comments too, because that, that gives us time to be having those conversations with the nation and to be looking at the watershed at a broader perspective. So I didn't want anybody to think that this was something that we were going to be getting back and actioning in the next, you know, six months even. So thank you.
Thank you. Director Bax?
Yeah, as to Director Gabius's statements earlier, that our process is, I guess, this is, this is how we go through our process to, and I would hope that this motion would, would put us on a path to start to discuss the health of the, of the watershed and that this is, I guess, a first step in that direction. I look forward to discussing this with the Seashell Nation.
Thank you very much. And seeing no further hands. And there is a motion on the floor. I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. Thank you very much. And from too little water, we move on to too much water. So the coastal flood mapping project update with Mr. Shea and Manager Hall, who has somehow become Jam Rosenbaum.
Thank you, Chair. This report provides a simple project update for the coastal flood mapping project. The project is a collaboration with the Town of Gibson's, the District of Seashelt, and Islands Trust, and it is on track with regards to scope, budget, and quality. Staff will continue to conduct general information-based outreach on coastal flooding in May, and we're aiming for a final report in Q3 of 2025. We're, staff are happy to take any questions, if the board has any.
Thank you. Director Inkster?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm looking forward to this report. I'm going to tell you about my worried areas, because that's my job at this table, to talk about, in some cases, what concerns me for the DOS. And that is downtown Seashelt, Davis Bay, Wilson Creek, and Tawannick. So I hope that the information, map and/or year-by-year movements, if possible, and/or volume of water, if possible, is fairly robust in those areas. And Chair, I'm asking that because these are, there's a bridge there that connects the entire coast and many people, including a large part of this board, to the hospital. So we need to be talking about that, but we also need to be aware of what's coming in the future in terms of problems in the lower, lower-lying areas of some of our communities. In Seashelt's case, it's a, the large, the retail area, but also the service area for Seashelt's population in those, in two of those cases. And then in, in one community that's, that will be cut off by road if there's water that comes up there and we don't have mitigation plans in place, and that would be potentially tawannic because of a couple of low roads into those areas. And I can't think of any other, other than far west Seashelt with the highway close to the road, which anybody that, I think Director Lee and Gabius know that it comes close to the ocean in that area as well, just north of Wakefield Roads. That's another area that I'm concerned about. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. Staff have any comments?
Thank you, Chair. The mapping project is for the entire Sunshine Coast. Areas of higher population density or of interest are more zoomed in. So the, all the, those areas around Seashelt are certainly a higher priority areas to have more information. And the mapping project will outline different storm and sea level rise scenarios so that different uses can be, can be done with the information, such as asset management or long-term community planning.
Thank you. As a follow-up question to that, I'm just wondering how we're going to engage the Ministry of Transportation, because the last time I checked in with them, they are not planning for sea level rise, and it's pretty critical in some areas. Any thoughts?
Thank you, Chair. The final report will outline options for where the board wishes to take the information. At this point, it will be a mapping exercise with some high-level recommendations for planning and land use planning. But as part of the 100% grant-funded UBCM grant we receive for this project, we're required to share all the information with the province so that it becomes part of the provincial mapping layers that they have at their disposal.
That's helpful. We as yet have no motions on the table. She hinted. Director Gabius?
Yes. Good observation. Oh, yeah. Where am I at? Which page is it? Yes, thank you, Director Lee. I'm happy to move the recommendations on page 12 with thanks to staff for the report.
And I see a seconder. And Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Just a, just a quick comment. You know, I appreciated Manager Shea's last comments there because, you know, in a way, this is downloading, right? This is work that the province should be undertaking, recognizing though, in this case, that this is a downloaded thing from the province where they are also providing funding. And so this is the right kind of downloading, where we're able to use our local knowledge and our local experts to do this work and then feed it back up to the province. So thank you to staff for doing this work. I was going to move the recommendations, but somebody beat me to it. So thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I like the concept of good downloading, but that's okay. Seeing no further hands, I'm calling the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? And that passes. And thank you very much. And we are whipping through the agenda here. So next up is the item on Town of Gibson's Boundary Adjustment Proposals, and I'm going over to our CAO and corporate officer.
Thank you, Chair. So this particular report is to inform the board of Town of Gibson's Boundary Adjustment Request. And so this came to the Town of Gibson's last year and the SCRD was made aware. This report outlines process to date and includes the process outlined by the province. There are several items still to be addressed, and we have highlighted them in the staff report, as we don't necessarily know all the specifics at this particular time. The Town of Gibson's has also issued their alternative approval process, as one of the key elements is for public approval. And so that goes live, and I think it concludes by the end of this month. So there isn't a chance for the regional district necessarily, as part of this process, to highlight any items. We don't have a role with the province necessarily, and that's dictated by the legislation. So happy to answer any questions if there are any specific to the report. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Could staff just very briefly outline the process as dictated by the province and our role or lack of role in the process?
Thank you, Chair. So I would like to turn the director's attention to page 18 of the report. Essentially, a boundary adjustment process has six steps that, it's led by the Town of Gibson's, and at some point, the regional district is invited to present any concerns that we may have. Ultimately, though, it goes through an agreement between the province and the Town of Gibson's. It will go to the legislature for approval, and once approved, it will come back to the regional district and, and then we will have to make any necessary amendments to our services. Letters patent may be amended as well as a result of the boundary change.
Thank you. The report mentions ministry. Is this the Ministry of Municipal Affairs?
Correct.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I was going to comment that the last boundary judgment, adjustment into Area E was in 2009, and it involved a number of businesses along Highway 101 petitioning to join the town in order to get sewer service, which seemed fairly straightforward. Interestingly, none of these properties are developed, the five that are petitioning to join the town. And so it's interesting to me that this petition is going forward. What I see in here is that the property owners benefit because they stand to gain a large increase in their property value. The town benefits because they don't pay for any servicing that has to be done. That's the developers that pay for that, and they will get more tax revenue from these properties. But we have to do a lot of work as part of this process, and we don't get compensated. Is that correct, that we are not compensated for any of the costs that we incur as part of this process?
That is my understanding of the process as it, as it is laid out in the legislation.
Thank you. Director?
I'll just ask the Chair, are you referring to like staff administrative work? I mean, we don't, we don't get compensated at the town either.
True, but you will get additional property taxes, which in the long run will compensate you for the...
I'll just remind everybody too, that we get, the Town of Gibson's, I get, I get billed, I get, I get a tax. When I pay taxes, I pay a lot of money to the Sunshine Coast Regional District, and these properties will be continuing, maybe not at the same level if they are in Area E, because they'd be paying for some other services like, like planning. But when it comes to a lot of services that I see on my personal tax bill as a resident of Town of Gibson's, you'll still be getting plenty of money, I guarantee it.
Sorry. The rural planning service is funded from the electoral areas, I will point out. However, I have a motion to read, and thank you for staff for assisting me with the wording of the motion. Moved that a letter be sent to the province and copied to the AVICC Legislative Reform Task Force detailing the SCRD's concerns about the legislative process for municipal boundary adjustments and the cost of the process to the regional district. And that the province be informed that the SCRD has the following concerns with respect to the Town of Gibson's Boundary Extension Application. Alignment with municipal land use and zoning policies, feasibility of servicing infrastructure and identification of servicing authorities, transportation access, connectivity, and road safety considerations, transition planning for existing service delivery, e.g., solid waste roads' fire protection, financial impacts, including cost responsibilities and administrative requirements, and intergovernmental coordination, public communication, and transparency of process. In retrospect, I'm not sure about the fire protection part, because the fire protection district does not change in this instance, so can we strike fire protection? Is there a seconder for the motion, first off? It's seconded, it's on the table. The process, the boundary adjustment process has been the source of complaints to the province for years from regional districts, because the regional districts have no say in it and the voters and taxpayers in the electoral areas have no say in the process. I see Director Inkster.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Obviously, that was, that was your motion that was brought forward. All good questions. It'll be interesting to see what they say, because it's all about then who's responsible for any costs associated with some of those answers to those questions. And it's always a cost, I have to say, and I've spoken to this before, because we, I identify that road, and I've mentioned it to you, South Pratt Road is a, is an area in which there may be some movement of land because people are looking for services. And I'll say, from my perspective as a municipal director, that I would gladly take commercial land from Half Moon Bay and/or Roberts Creek if they were wanting to join the District of Seashelt in order to hook up to our services. Just honestly. So I, that's my general, my general theory, and to me, it makes sense because of the services that we may provide in those areas and those property owners wanting those services so they make the application. So on Empire Building, it's a request by the property owners. So it's just from municipal's perspective. Thanks.
Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, recognizing that this is a process that's driven by the property owners that are looking to join the Town of Gibson's, there's a couple of these bullet points I don't agree with. And so, you know, I can support a couple of them, but I would request that we actually vote on each bullet point separately. Thank you.
Okay. That's, that's a motion to sever. Actually, we could put it into too large, because there's, there's two enactment clauses, or move that, and then there's a second paragraph. So if you would go back and take a look, see, I will go next to, I believe it's Director Bax.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess historically, this kind of movement goes from the rural areas to the municipalities, and no one ever leaves a municipality to join a rural area. Has that ever happened? Really? Okay. So it's just, it's just a natural, it's a, it's a natural evolution of, of the wishes of the property owners and, but I suppose I would have to agree with Director McMahon's letter to UBCM to get some more clarity around the, around the legislation so that, so that there's an appearance of fairness for the regional district as well. But I understand both sides of this, and I think it's, you know, it's, it's up to the property owners where they want to pay their fair share of taxes and where they want to get their services from. If they have an opportunity to get more services, then, you know, that's what they're going to do. All right.
Thank you. And I will just note that the consultant's report that was prepared for the Town of Gibson's said that the SCRD had no concerns, which was not what I heard from our staff. So I just, this is the trouble with having the consultant prepare the report. So Director Inkster, is your hand residual? Okay. Thank you. Yeah, they are good topics, but, so if we sever the motion, we start with one motion, which is moved that a letter be sent to the province and copied to the AVICC Legislative Reform Tax Task Force detailing the SCRD's concerns about the legislative process for municipal boundary adjustments and the cost of the process to the regional district. Could I have a mover for that? Could I have a mover for that motion? Moved. Seconder? Seconded. Any, switching screens, Director White.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, I'll just ask, even this report today was requested by the board incurring more staff work on this process, which I think Director Bax has made a pretty good summary of. Basically, what the province supports is that if there are properties that are eligible for this, and not many for this kind of boundary expansion, not many are, they need to be like directly adjacent, and they can't even be, I mean, my understanding is if it's like a property further down Pratt Road, and it's just like a one-off down there, that one can't just join. You can't have like a boundary line that's like this, and this, and this zigzagging. It's very few properties that can, on a relative basis in our areas that can, are even eligible for this. Basically, what the province supports is if you're one of those properties that's eligible for this, there's a process to follow, and this process is being followed. So it's, this is already, there's already been extra staff time. I mean, if the concern here is staff time not being paid for, not, but being incurred by the regional district, there's already extra staff time being put into this because the board asked for this extra report that we're looking at today. And now there are more requests for staff time to be put into this. So, and we know what the answer is going to be. I mean, the province has their process. So I just want to point that out to everybody here, that we're just asking for, if the concern is staff, the SCRD's staff time being put into this, it's just, you're just asking for more and more. And, I mean, this process has been going ahead, it's going ahead properly. The SCRD's been aware of it, and I guarantee a lot more staff time has gone into it from the town of Gibson's side because we have to follow it too. And that's been, you know, yeah, ultimately, there'll probably be some taxation, more taxation that will come, but at the moment, this period in time, it's kind of frustrating for this extra work to be lobbed onto our planning department when it's not, wasn't in our strategic plan, wasn't in our work plan. It's having to administer something that staff wasn't expecting. So it's staff time that we're having to incur too. I'll just remind everyone of that. But looking at these motions, we didn't have any choice in that. The board does have a choice to incur this extra staff time in these motions and the previous motion to look at this report, and that's the choice you have before you.
Thank you Director White. Director Inkster.
Yeah, I did hear earlier a proposal to look at these individually. It'd be good to have that discussion just to see how it fits with what the board or those directorial, rural directors have with concerns with the process. That's fair. And we may have, we may need to have that discussion because, as I've said before, this is the beginning, in my mind, of what's probably going to happen on Pratt. I see it, I see it moving down. I see the municipality expanding down Pratt Road just because of the, what the people there envision in their future. I just, because I know some of them, and I know there, it's going to be a move down Pratt, and that's, that's what's going to happen. It's going to be a property, the property owners, that's their, that's their right. So anyway, so let's just make sure we have a process going forward and we understand what's going on. Thanks.
Thank you Director Gabius.
Thank you Chair. And if I may ask, what is the, what would be the desired outcome of this advocacy? Like what are we hoping changes? Or are we looking for more resources from the province? Like what is, or for the process to change? Like a little explanation of like what we're aiming for would be helpful.
Sure. There have been multiple requests, the province, to change the process, to consider the regional district on the same footing as a municipality. We, the process, which is very old, seems to assume that there are no existing services or considerations in the regional district. And it's frustrating because there should be a consultation. We're not even, I don't think, required to be informed, which is quite undemocratic. I have concerns, this has been going on for some time. There is a whole snout of the town of Gibson's that has expanded into what used to be Area E. And it's a very sort of inefficient way to come at this in a peaceful manner, you know, one or two properties at a time. So I would like to see a better process, and then that could be considered as part of the legislative reform because it is part of the Local Government Act as it currently stands. So notifying AVICC to consider that as part of the legislative reform initiative is one of the concerns. I'm not going to advocate right now for another resolution to UBCM because we've been here and done that, and other regional districts have done resolutions that I think were, covered the ground. So we don't really need to reinvent the wheel there. But as part of the legislative reform process that is currently moving forward, this is the opportunity to address some of the issues regarding the authority of regional districts and the way the province treats it. And Director Toth.
Thank you Chair. And, you know, I recognize the irony that most of the comments are coming from municipal directors on this particular subject. But I agree 100% that the legislation for regional districts is old and outdated. But, you know, one of the fundamental aspects for regional districts is to provide governance for unincorporated areas, with the idea that those areas eventually grow up and either incorporate themselves or join other, you know, municipalities. You know, when you look around the province, probably half the municipalities of the province have a smaller population than your area, Director. And so, you know, in a lot of other places in the province, you have every right to be a town of your own. And, you know, municipality to municipality, I understand it would be a completely different process if there was boundary adjustments. So, you know, yes, a lot of this is old legislation, a lot of this is, you know, understanding of what the regional districts were originally created for in the first place. A bunch of this is the fact that the structure of a regional district does not really facilitate, I think, the sort of conversation and interactivity that you're looking for in this process. And so just from my own perspective, I did ask for us to sort of vote on each bullet separately. I support points two, three, and four, but I won't be supporting the others. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If we can deal with the motion that's on the floor, that would be helpful. And that was just the first paragraph of the proposed motion. So I'm going to call a question on the letter about advocacy. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you very much. I'm actually, I think it would be more efficient to, rather than get into bullet points right at the moment, to send, to not get into such specifics. I'm just debating whether we should call a five-minute recess, just to look at a better process here, because I don't want to waste our time arguing about bullets. It's not, it's not, it's not productive. So, okay, I'm calling a five-minute recess.
Thank you, and we are returning to our exciting Committee of the Whole from Thursday, May 8, 2025. I neglected after the last motion to ask whether the persons who voted against would like their votes recorded.
Yeah, sure.
Yes?
Yeah, that's a standing, that's a standing yes for me, for everybody who chairs these meetings, that's fine.
Good, thank you. Okay, and I'm going to look to Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. In light of the comments I made earlier, and that's sort of the concerns I see are around, you know, transition and, you know, shared services, things like that. I will move, you know, and let the province be informed that the SCRD has the following concerns with respect to the Town of Gibson's boundary extension application. One, feasibility of servicing infrastructure and identification of servicing authorities. Two, transportation access, connectivity, and road safety considerations. And three, transition planning for existing service delivery, e.g., solid waste and roads. And I'm going to leave it there.
Thank you. Do I have a second? And that is seconded. Thank you very much. And I'm just going to make one more comment, which was that although, I am quite sure when the regional district legislation was created, there was an assumption that populous areas would incorporate. But that hasn't been happening for many years. I think the Town of Gibson's had, what, 300 people when it originally incorporated? But the problem is that there is no business case for incorporation anymore, because there are more and more administrative requirements to be a municipality, and there isn't the tax base to support it for many areas, especially if you're primarily residential. So, Director White.
Just to have some questions about this motion. I mean, is the implication of this motion that these concerns weren't covered in the, I haven't looked closely at the urban systems feasibility study of each property, I don't think any of us probably have, it's kind of more between the property owner and the process. But is the implication that that wouldn't have been addressed in that? And is that what we're suggesting here?
Yes, in fact, that would be my argument, that the report did not adequately reflect the comments that the SCRD made.
What were the comments that the SCRD made?
Well, I don't know, they happened at a staff meeting, but...
I understand there were no concerns.
Really?
I mean, that's what the, that's what the report said. I mean, you said that yourself, Chair.
Does the CIO wish to weigh in at this point?
So, the staff did meet when the consultant's report was being drafted. We did highlight several considerations. So, I think characterizing the adjective of concerns, I think we're just illuminating, here are some considerations if this does occur. And I think that staff illuminated through the process that things like servicing connections, so water, so if a pipe is running on one side of the road and they're going to be now having to connect on the other side of the road, how are we going to undertake those? So, I think we just illuminated several things we'd all have to consider if this progressed at that particular time. We had a subsequent meeting a couple of months ago to, I think, deep further into the specifics of those things. Last year, it was a little more at a high level. So, they weren't necessarily, these are showstoppers for us, but these are some things we're going to have to consider. How they were characterized into the consultant's report, I think, saying that there's no concerns, I think from the regional district's perspective, they aren't things that we can't undertake, it's just it'll take a process. And so, they're not necessarily anything there that's a showstopper for, from our perspective. It just means we might have to have subsequent servicing agreements for a period of time. As a corporate officer highlighted, we'll have process changes that we'll have to undertake. Again, I think we recognize that this is a very unusual process. They don't happen often here. Like you said, 2009 was the last time, so a lot of the staff, this is their first go-round with this. So, I think we're all learning process as we go along. And from a high level in those bullet points, those are things we're going to probably have to deep dive into as, if the AP passes and we're actually actioning this.
Thank you. And perhaps the word implications would, would be helpful in this. There are implications, and I don't think they were particularly well reflected in the consultant report. Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to support this motion, because I don't understand what the, the goal of highlighting the concerns in respect of this particular boundary expansion application. Like, the process was followed, so it is what it is. And I feel like those concerns that have been highlighted, those bullet points, should go into that letter that we just, the motion we just passed, like the kind of broader letter to the province and to AVICC. So, I'm not going to support the second one, just for those reasons. Thanks.
Director White?
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like the considerations that the SCRD affirmed are exactly why this process exists. It's, those considerations that province and the property owners and the town are well aware of the fact, I mean, we all are, and of course, the regional district is, that we're going to have to somehow transfer over the service provision of water of, of, I mean, it's just, I wouldn't, I mean, I heard the word showstopper used, there's no showstoppers. So, I mean, if we're now going to write a follow-up letter, kind of characterizing those considerations that every party involved in this is aware of as concerns, we'd better be ready to back that up with, like, why they're actually showstoppers, why they are concerns. I mean, is it, is it because, is the implication that the town can't actually take on? I mean, if we couldn't actually take on water or anything being asked for by these property owners, we wouldn't be going through this. We'd have to say, sorry, we're out, but we can. So, we have to follow this process. I mean, we're, so, I'm just, what's the next step? I mean, if we're going to start, if we're going to re-characterize these considerations as, as concerns that need to be addressed, I mean, what are they? What are the concerns? Are they that the town can't, can't, can't take this on?
Okay, I'm going to comment, but this will be my last comment. So far, the considerations have not been documented, the, that I'm aware of. There have been verbal meetings, there was the consultant's report, but I do not believe that the regional district's viewpoint in this matter has been documented. And I think it would be a good thing, it would be preferable that the process documented our concerns by default, but that isn't the case. Director Engster.
Thanks, Chair. I've been really clear about my comments earlier about if a property owner wants to join municipality, commercial area, that that's, there's just a process for that. The considerations and that were mentioned previously by staff, that they represent the rural areas in this case, so they're going to put those considerations forward. I don't have a problem with that either, it's just the way things work. The municipality would have their own discussion with the property owners as they move to joining municipality. Good example for SeaShelt is somebody may want to join SeaShelt for our sewer, sewer lines. It's a really good consideration. So, other than the fact that SeaShelt, they want to, may want to join because we have a great council, there's, they may also want to join because of the sewer lines, and that's fine. And, but guess what? When that happens, they pay for the connection. Thanks.
Thank you. Director White?
I'm confused on what this vote is on, because, I mean, I'm hearing the SCRD has, has a position, and I still haven't heard what that position is yet. There are considerations that are, are in this report, they are documented in this report. I mean, in any boundary extension, all the parties know that there are considerations that need to be addressed, like the, the transfer of service provisions of, of water, of sewer, of snow removal, of, they're, they're all here, of transportation issues, and whether, and the province is involved as well. And just to say that we understand, we understand those services have to be transferred over, I don't really see that as a position, that's what the whole process is. So, what, if we're going to send a letter saying what the SCRD's position is, I need to know what that's, I need to know what that position is before I vote on it.
Director Toth?
Thanks, Chair, I think. I was actually going to suggest an amendment just to soften the language, because I think, I think raising concern with the use of the word concerns is valid. And so, implications, I think, is probably the, the better point. And I think what Director McMahon's been trying to sort of express through this is not that this process is being undertaken, but that there's really no avenue for the SCRD to be providing feedback back to the decision-maker about this, which is the province in this case. And, you know, if it's going to go ahead based on the legislation and the process, that's totally fine, at least as far as I'm concerned. Like, I'm not opposed to this at all, generally speaking. I, I think it's not unreasonable for the regional district as a service provider to flag implications of this that we still have questions about, because we do still have questions about this. And yes, they will unravel in the process, but if we're already sending the letter, it's not much more effort to add in a couple of things that we still have questions about the implications of. And so, my amendment, if anybody would support it, would be to strike everything between SCRD and the town and replace it with, has questions about implications respecting. So, rather than concerns, it's implications. Thank you.
Okay, that, that was a motion to amend. Is, is there a second to the motion? Okay, we have a second. So, we have a motion to amend on the floor. All right, Director White on the motion to amend?
Could I, could I?
Director Lee?
Could I get the whole amendment read back? I was trying to follow it.
Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. And so, that would read, and that the province be informed that the SCRD has questions about implications respecting the Town of Gibson's boundary extension application, and then those three bullet points that I previously mentioned.
Thank you. And I think Director Toth nailed it exactly, is that there is no provision in the process for the SCRD to communicate with the province. And I think we should, because it should be part of the process. So, motion on the floor, Director White, are you speaking to the?
So, I'm still, I asked about what the position is, so that's what the questions are. The questions are the position. And those questions, I don't have them written in front of me? Sorry, those are bullet points?
[inaudible]
Okay.
It, it is the amendment that is on the floor. Are there any further questions?
Yeah, I don't really see that as a position. I mean, again, I, I'm just repeating myself, sorry. But that's just, that's just what the process is. It has to, it has to consider all those factors. So, for the SCRD to affirm that, I don't see the point.
Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to call the question on the proposed amendment. All those in favor? Any opposed? Would those opposed like their opposition recorded? Thank you. Now, we're moving on to the amended motion. I'm calling the question, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Those opposed would like their opposition recorded? Thank you. Oh, phew. All right. Thank you very much, everybody, for your patience. And now, we are going to move on to considerations of American tariffs. And over to our manager of purchasing.
Thank you. This report has been prepared in response to the board's March 13 directive and provides an overview of the regional district's procurement process. In the context of the ongoing tariff dispute, it examines the potential implications of prioritizing Canadian-made goods and services and identifies both immediate and long-term strategies. While the U.S. remains a key trading partner, it is important to note that the U.S. is not a party of the trade agreements most applicable to local governments, including the Canadian Free Trade Agreement, the new U.S. Partnering Agreement, and the Comprehensive Economic and Trade Agreement with the EU. As such, certain procurement decisions may be more flexible with involving U.S.-based suppliers. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Director Bax?
Yes, thank you, manager. So, the, the question I have is that we, once upon a time, we did have trade agreements with the Americans. Now, I believe that the recent actions of the administration in the United States has pretty much nullified a lot of those agreements. Is, can we, can we confirm that the, the trade agreements that we have with the Americans have been violated and they are no longer in force?
Are they null and void?
I cannot confirm that. What I can say is the trade agreement between America and Canada never had public procurement implications for local governments.
Okay, so, that's a good answer. Thank you.
Great answer. Thank you. Director Gabius?
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank staff so much for this report. Love, well, love, I don't love to see the impacts, the potential impacts on the organization, but it's really good for us to know for, if there's any strategic decisions that need to be made, it's good to know what's perhaps coming down the pipe. So, thank you for that. And understanding that FCM has been doing some work, UBCM has been doing some work about that, and that, you know, we're bound by certain things, and that is totally fair. But yeah, thank you. Just want to, this is very, very informative, and I thank staff for taking the time to do this. Very illuminating. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Director Toth?
Thank you, Chair. For those following along at home, I, you know, I really want to highlight that 99.2% of our POs in 2024 went to Canadian suppliers. I think that's pretty awesome. I think that needs to be recognized out there. When I read this report, you know, the environmental scan, impacts to the organization, it really boils down to pipes, computers, and cars, which is a lot of what the regional district does, unfortunately. But yeah, I guess we'll see how this all sort of plays out in the coming months and years. So, yeah, thank you for this report. I, I think it's quite a useful piece of information.
Director Engster?
That's interesting statistics, 99%. I would love to know local suppliers, but where, where's the materials coming from though, right? Because they're taking their piece, but the original manufacturer could be not in Canada, obviously, with computers, we know where they're coming from, and we just probably, I don't know, Bellevue, Washington, right? So, that's, that's something we need to consider, because that's where that money's going in terms of a reaction to this. Chair, could I just ask, if possible, we're accepting this report, I have to read a little more closely, because I'm looking for, I was looking for more information, is, can we, can I ask that this report go to the District of SeaShelt?
Motion to refer? Motion to refer?
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Okay, you're making that motion. Is there a second?
Sure.
There's a second? I'm just going to call a question on that. All in favor? Sure. Thanks. Yeah. Director Stanford?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to note that part of the challenge is not so much is the tariffs, but it's the uncertainty and the fact that we are requesting staff to have to do this. It seems to be the uncertainty itself is what's creating a lot of the difficulty in the situation, and this is just an example of it. And I'm hoping that when a situation does arise where there is a specific impact, that we'll be able to see that in some kind of staff report for any specific situation. For instance, potential work on the water, that there is a line item, if tariffs are imposed in a way that impacts those kind of projects.
Okay, Director Engster, are you residual? Or are you back?
Yeah, thank you. This is, this is an interesting topic going forward, because we could end up counter-tariffing, which is what we should do, supplies coming to us that are for any of the things. So, there's going to be costs there that Director Stanford's talking about, all those effects, like any work that we need to be done. Director Toth and I were just talking about work that needs to happen at the rec center when the shutdown happens. And so, there's going to be costs. Where is that equipment coming from? So, it'll be interesting. Although, tomorrow, the, that person to the south could drop all tariffs, and then, and it doesn't matter anymore, because it just goes in circles. But it's just something we should be considerate of. Thanks.
Thank you. And I don't see any further hands, but this is, this is, of course, a topic that the public is very interested in. So, I appreciate the report, and we'll, we'll see what happens. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the Regional Accessibility Advisory Committee. Are there any items arising? Are there any items arising from that? Director Toth.
Thank you, Chair. Looking at recommendation number two on page 27, it's kind of a weird one that they're wanting us to sort of advocate to ourselves for the BC Transit portion of things. In discussion sort of during agenda review, we talked about referring this back to SCRAC for inclusion in their, their final report. And so, I'd actually like to make a recommendation that recommendation number two from the February 24 SCRAC meeting be referred back to the committee for potential inclusion in their final report.
Thank you. Is there a second? That seconded. Director Engster, is your hand residual? Okay. Not seeing any further hands. All those in favor? Any opposed? That passes. Thank you. We are at the end of our regular agenda. I am now looking for a motion that the public be excluded from attendance at the meeting in accordance with section 91K of the community charter. Moved, seconded, all those in favor? Thank you. And just before we go, there's a hand up in the gallery. And, all right, I'm going to ask the person in the gallery to identify themselves and ask their question. I did. Christopher Johnson? I am not, I'm not hearing anything. Okay, that's, that's it for right now. Sorry about that, but we cannot hear you. Yeah, you can, you can email your, your questions to the SCRD, and we'll be happy to answer it. We are now going to go in camera, so we're going to ask everybody in the gallery to please leave. Yeah. I don't think I- I don't think I've Thank you, everyone. You have just found yourselves at the dying embers of the committee of the whole meeting of May the 8th, 2025. Do I see a motion to adjourn? Moved, seconded, all in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.